I'll call the August 17, 2010 meeting of Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order, and I'll call upon Mr. Robertson for our invocation.
May I bow our heads, please? Lord, we'd first like to thank you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We live in the greatest nation on earth. We live in a good state and a wonderful county. Lord, thank you also for the troops who are out there in harm's way defending the freedom of Americans and also oppressed people around the world. Lord, thank you for the hard-working citizens of our county that get up every day and keep America moving. Lord, we ask that you bless this board with wisdom to make good decisions today and help the presenters to communicate well with us so that we can do what is right. And finally, we ask that you would be with our Chairman Marvin Norman tonight. He's presently ill, and we ask that you touch him with your healing hand. And finally, we ask that you be with the family of Carol McNeely. His son is Jeff McNeely, who is on our planning board, and his son-in-law is our Vice Chairman, Steve Johnson. His family has served this community well, and we ask that you be with them during this time. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Join us in the pledge of allegiance, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call upon Mr. Mashburn at this point for any adjustments that the staff may have to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment to make to the agenda. This information has been sent out to you, and I'd like to add this under the appointments before the board. This is a request from the Wayside Fire Department for the county to fund the purchase of some additional land for fire department expansion, and we do have representatives of Wayside here to make that request, and so I would like to add that under the appointments before the board.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the adjustments that I have to the agenda.
Are there any adjustments to come from the board or Mr. Pope? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion that we accept these adjustments and adopt this agenda. Motion by Mr. Robertson. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no presentations or special recognitions and awards that I'm aware of this evening, so we'll move through the appointments before the board and Wayside Volunteer Fire Department. And Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm Tim Warren, the Chief of the Wayside Volunteer Fire Department, coming to you tonight to request assistance with funding of approximately 12 acres of property located on Bethesda Road. We're currently in the process of looking for property to relocate our current station because we have outgrown the station. We did locate this property. It's approximately eight tenths of a mile south, and it will serve the district very well. The price of the property is $150,000. That was the cheapest price that we found. We found a range between $12,000 an acre and $147,000 an acre, and we request your assistance with this.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Warren?
How long do y'all anticipate that you'll be able to stay in your current facilities and be able to provide an adequate level of services? And I ask that question to kind of get some feel for, at what point are we going to need to build on this property?
Okay. At this current time, because of our last rating, we have purchased an additional engine to help cover that side of the county. That engine will be arriving in October. At that time, we will be maxed out of space. As a matter of fact, we may end up having to park a unit outside. So we're just trying to get the land in place at this time.
Okay. But your rating was improved, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, so this really fits into that larger plan of, yeah, it costs a little bit more money to provide the fire service, but the homeowners in your area received a reduction in their homeowners insurance because of the improved rating, correct?
That is correct. And the last number that I looked at was approximately $1.5 million in insurance savings.
Per?
Per our district.
Per year.
Per year. Correct.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Warren? I thank you for the effort on your insurance reduction, Mr. Warren. I think that speaks well to your fire department. Do you continue to plan to operate your substation?
Yes, sir. We will continue to operate the substation in order to be able to cover that backside of that five-mile district. It would actually put part of that property into a 10 rating, so we will maintain the substation to maintain that as a six rating.
So everyone in your district will have a fire rating. Is there any pockets that won't in that area? I know we had one we had to deal with on the west side of the county.
Right. There is still some pockets that went from a 10 to a nine, which is a good insurance coverage for where it's located. The only way we can cover that would be to build two more substations, and it's not going to be an economical decision for us to do that this time.
Okay. Any other questions? The request we have before us is for $150,000 for the purchase of land. If there are no other questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the funding and purchase of land.
Okay. Motion to approve by Mr. Mitchell. Is any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and thank you again, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you folks volunteering.
This time, we'll call the meeting into a public hearing in regard to consideration of the fiscal year 11, North Carolina Department Transportation Rural Operating Assistance Program, application along with authorization with the chairman and county manager to sign a certification statement. Mr. Ben Garrison, I think, will make this presentation. Good evening, Mr. Garrison.
Good evening. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow citizens to have input into our FY11 NCDOT Public Transportation Rural Operating Assistance Program grant that I will submit on behalf of Iredale County. The deadline for submitting the grant is August 31 of 2010. Basically, these funds are used to transport elderly, disabled, low-income, and some limited funding for the general public. This year's application contains a total of $349,534. We do use our formula and supplemental employment funds through this grant to meet the match requirements for our Job Access Program grant. And because the general public funds require a local match, we charge our passengers fares for riding. This year, they've added a certification statement that they're asking the county manager and chairman of the county commissioners to sign, and that's new, but basically, they're wanting to make counties aware that these funds are available. There are some counties that don't apply for all these funds, and I think the intent is to let counties know if funds are not being applied for. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Garrison? If not, floor is for a motion. I believe the action we'll take is for approval for you to proceed and make application. Is that right, Mr. Garrison?
That's correct, and for the chairman and county manager to sign the certification statement.
All right. Floor is open for a motion to that effect.
I think a motion that y'all sign the certified statement for the Rural Operating Assistance Program.
Okay. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Sir. At this point, I'm going to turn the agenda over to Mr. Mashburn and let him announce the administrative matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is Item A, which is approval of the June and July refunds and releases have been requested by Mr. Furches to point out one item on here that probably stood out as you were reviewing these numbers, in that there is a pretty hefty refund of county funds to one particular industry, also city or state's funds as well. And what this is, is that the JPS Composite Corporation that took over the old Clark, Schwabel, and Hexel reinforcements buildings, applied for a different depreciation schedule than the previous companies had applied for, and because of some language in the state law, because this is textile equipment, does allow for a different depreciation schedule, so it goes from a 612 to an AT-08 and an AT-10, which doesn't mean anything to me, but nevertheless, that is provision that is permitted under the statutes. And in so doing, does permit and does allow JPS to receive a refund of previous year's taxes that they have paid. And so that explains the major portion of the refunds and releases, and other than that, they're all pretty much as usual.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion for approval of the refunds and releases.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Cadel. Any questions? Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is request from the library for a budget amendment, and then immediately following that will be three requests from the Health Department.
Good evening. I'm requesting that the board approve a budget amendment to recognize a grant we have been awarded by the state library for $10,400. We will use this money to purchase computers for public use. There is a matching, match required of $2,600. That money is already allocated in our FY 2010, 2011 budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Mesic?
Just out of curiosity, you say only three of the original 20 computers are working. Are we going to get a different kind of computer this time?
That's specifically in our children's area. That's where these computers would go. We haven't bought any new computers since we moved into the building in 2005.
Yeah. I mean, just out of curiosity, I mean, did y'all look at somehow getting a more robust keyboard or whatever it is that's causing so many of them to go down?
Actually, a lot of the computers, we have had problems with. There is actually a lawsuit now in North Carolina against Dell over these particular brands of computers, so they were not what they were advertised to be.
Clearly. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. When you purchase the computers, will they be put out on bids, or will you just negotiate?
Well, we'll buy them under state contract.
Under state contract? Okay. Do you find that the best way to buy them?
Yes, in fact, we were able to get very good prices.
They don't work, but they're good prices.
Good prices, okay.
Very good prices.
About like some of our other state contract deals.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mesic. Ms. Campbell?
We're requesting a budget amendment to purchase some software for dental billing. We would use 100% Medicaid Max dollars, and there wouldn't be any county funds used. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Nope. If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve of the motion, the request.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay?
Our next item is a request for a budget amendment to accept $700 from the North Carolina Regional Heart Disease and Stroke Prevention Program, and this is provide a focus group to evaluate a DVD called "100 Faces of Strokes," and this would help cover the cost of us doing this, and also would purchase some additional educational materials for stroke prevention education.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Campbell in regard to this request? Hearing none, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is information on the first half. We have some new CPT codes that we need to inform you about. Medicaid has told us that we can now charge an administration fee when we give an immunization during a well-child checkup visit, and we already have fees in place for administration of vaccines, but they have special codes that they want us to use when we do the shots or immunizations in child health. So we're informing you of our new codes that'll be added to the existing fee schedule. We're not changing any of the fees, just adding the codes. The second part of it does require a vote. We neglected to include in the fee schedule a hepatitis B vaccine for patients less than 19 years of age, and that would be a fee of $30. This is something that with the changes in the state immunization program, and they're not paying for many of the vaccines anymore, we're going to have to start charging for, and so this is something we've not charged for before.
Okay. So the only thing you actually need action on is the $30 fee for the hepatitis B?
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. Any questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Motion, Mr.?
Okay, go ahead. Let's vote on it.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
If I could ask Ms. Campbell, if she would do us a favor, we're hearing an awful lot about the financial straits that Medicare, Medicaid will be in, and some of the budget shortfalls, both at the state and federal levels. A lot of times, those will appear across your desk first about how they may be trying to shift some of the cost burdens onto the county. If you can, when you start to see that happening, if you could, I know Mr. Mitchell sits on your board, but don't be hesitant to let us know what's happening, because I think when that tsunami, when that water starts to rise, we need as much heads up as we can, either to try to get our delegation to afford it all, or just to know what's coming to hit the taxpayers of the county.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I heard today, and I haven't got official notice, but I got an alert that there's going to be a decrease in our Medicaid fees, and so I'm waiting for the official word on that, on exactly what that means, but I will let you all know.
Any idea what percentage?
I believe it's 1.3-something percent, and that's sort of what we've been hearing before. If they went ahead and made the cuts earlier in the year, if they waited, it would be higher.
Right.
But I'll keep you informed.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, and happy birthday, Ms. Campbell.
Mr. Wall will present the next item, which is authorization to apply for some funds or to use some funds, and then a following hand will be Lynn Neblock on a project ordinance modification.
We've been awarded $3,148 in Family Valence Prevention Program, and we asked the commissioners to recognize these funds.
Okay. So move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Mr. Cadel. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
What I have for you tonight is a request to add some additional buildings to the lighting upgrade project that's been ongoing. That project's been going well, and we actually appear that we're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of $26,000 left that we won't spend according to our original estimate, and so we would like to add some additional county buildings to the original project ordinance list to allow us to spend the remainder of the $240,000 that was originally allocated for that portion of the projects that we're doing the stimulus grant money for. So what I would ask the board to do would be approve the addition of the additional county facilities, which there is a list attached, and to amend the current project ordinance by adding those to allow us to utilize the remainder of the $240,000. It's not increasing the original amount of the project ordinance, it's just allowing us to do some additional facilities that we did not have on the original list. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to try to address them.
I kind of have a question more as a federal taxpayer and not so much as a county commissioner. As a county commissioner, we're just going to authorize you to take this money that was given as part of the stimulus and spend it on more buildings than we thought we could spend it on. I think that's a no-brainer. My question is somewhat from being a taxpayer. We've spent a lot of money on lighting fixtures because it's supposed to save money on lighting costs.
Right.
How are electricity costs gone down?
Well, we really haven't. We're just now to the point where we can start tracking the energy savings to get you a good figure, and of course, what we'll have to do is go back and get some prior data before the changes were made, and we're actually in the process of trying to put some of that information together, so I can give you a fair...
Is that part of the grant? Are you required to show any sort of bang for the buck, or do they just give you the money and say, spend it?
You are required to show some savings. Now, as far as a set amount in the grant, I'm not aware of. You have to show like 20% or 10% or whatever, but for no other reason than to know how much bang we did get for our buck, I think we want to track that information and get an idea. But we're just now finishing up the first list of buildings, and we need to go back and build that prior year data, and, excuse me, start building data from there forward so we can, I'd say, within a quarter... so we can, I'd say within a quarter, we should be able to get some idea of what type of savings we're looking at.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would also just like to remind the board, though, it did one other thing, and it also allowed us to keep some employees on that we would've had to lay off otherwise.
Right.
That's true, and since how those were my employees, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the request we have for us is to amend the original ordinance to add these locations. Any other-
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend by Mr. Robertson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Neblock.
Thank you all.
Mr. Jackson will present items H and I, and, um, is David gonna be here? David Clower's not gonna be here for this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Memo number nine is a request for approval for an agreement between Sprint and Aridale County. And what Sprint would do for us is apply, uh, install a, uh, cellphone amplifier at the EMS substation in Troutman, at the new substation. So this, the direct benefit for us is improved cellphone use and coverage for EMS. And the requirement for us would be to maintain a minimum of 50 devices for 24 months with a minimum monthly service average of $35 per month. I checked with, uh, Dean Lell, who's our purchasing agent, and currently we have 305 Nextel or Sprint devices that we, you know, have subscriptions for. So we should be fine in that category, as far as meeting that requirement. No other costs are associated with this.
Okay, so this will take some, care of some of the dead spots down along the river that you keep hearing about, or at least some of-
It'll help the folks that are in and around the building when they're there and using the push-to-talk device, uh, for Sprint. It'd also benefit the Troutman fire folks that are in that substation also.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, uh, well, it's also helped the citizens that's got Sprint phones or just for those county phone?
Uh, if they have that Sprint phone and they're close enough to the building, it's just a radius around the building, so really it's just to kinda help us boost that signal and get it on to the next cellphone tower. It's more of a repeater than anything else.
I was just wondering what was in it for me, Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry.
There's a slight benefit if you're in that, uh, proximity, so.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, the floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All right, memo number 10 is, um, an agreement that has been before the board previously. Uh, Mr. Barton, if you remember, is the vendor of the hot dog cart that's at the courthouse presently. And he has approached the county and wishes to operate, uh, the cart at the Government Center South, just outside the courthouse entrance. And we've talked to Mr. Barton, um, there were some things that, um, we felt like needed to be addressed in terms of the appearance of his, uh, his cart and some of the signage and, and, uh, he's working to comply with that. And we felt like he's been, uh, very good so far in terms of trying to comply with the agreement that we have in place. This agreement is no different in terms of the requirements, uh, just changes in terms of the location. So if you have any questions, be glad to, to answer those at this time.
Mr. Jackson, it's come to my attention, there were a couple of issues as, as far as his operation at courthouse, he's operating now, and he's in the process of resolving that, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and those weren't major?
Right.
More appearance than anything else?
And he, he has worked with us, but, and, and I've discussed this with Mr. Jackson as well, you know, we would want to make sure that he does everything that, that needs to be done here before we actually let him set up down there. We would like for you to go ahead and give us permission to do it as soon as we're satisfied that he's done all that he can do to, uh, make the, the operation here, uh, more suitable for, for the location that it has, um. You know, if this was new for him, it was new for us. So if, this has kinda been a learning process, but he has been very cooperative. There's just a couple of things that we have asked for him to do, and if he gets those done, then I see no reason that he shouldn't be also permitted to, um, put a cart at the, uh, at Moore's, at the Moore'sville facility as well.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you will recommend this contingent upon his rectifying the matters before the staff right now?
That's correct.
If he'll correct those?
That's correct.
So the motion requested would be approval contingent upon your satisfaction of these two issues?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions, Mr. Jackson? If not, floor's open for a motion. The request is for approval contingent upon the staff satisfaction of, uh, the remedy of some pending issues at his current location.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. The stated request, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
And the last item under administrative matters is a request for approval of the August 3, uh, 2010 minutes.
Okay. Yeah. Is there a motion for approval?
Minutes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Motion for approval, Mr. Cadel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commission. We have one announcement of a vacancy for the Animal Grievance Committee. Next item is appointments to boards and commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We have one appointment. Floor's open for nominations.
Nominate Mr. Johnny Elliott.
Mr. Johnny Elliott's been nominated, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move that the floor be closed to nomination and Mr. Elliott be appointed by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and we have two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, nominate Linda Periano.
Okay. Miss Peri- Okay. Miss Periano has been nominated, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll move that Miss Periano be appointed by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the Troutman Planning and Zoning Board, ETJ. Uh, we have one appointment.
Nominate Mr. Tommy Moore.
Mr. Tommy Moore's been nominated, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move that the floor be closed to nominations and Mr. Moore be appointed by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have the Aridale Advocacy Academy for Substance Abuse Awareness and Recovery. We have one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you were gonna make a suggestion on that.
Yeah, I was gonna go to that breakfast in the morning, Mr. Cadel, uh, but I'm not gonna make it now because of the passing of my father-in-law, but I do have a lady who's expressing interest, and, uh, we can postpone that one until our next meeting.
Motion to table.
Thank you, sir. Motion to table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, is there any unfinished business to come to our attention? Hearing none, we have a public comment period, and I believe we have Kimberley-
I'm, I'm sorry. We, we can make, uh, I'd like to make an appointment for the, uh, for the regular member and the alternate member on the Aging Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I'd like to bring in Barbara Barrier as the regular member and Carolyn Jordan as the alternate member.
Okay. We have a nomination by Mr. Robertson for the Region F Aging Advisory Committee, Miss Barrier and Miss Jordan. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I believe, I'll make a motion that the floor be closed to nomination and these two ladies be appointed by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And that, and that's it for-
That's it, okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the Recreation Advisory Board, that's-
Let's, if we can, let's wait.
Be that way, okay.
Okay, uh, public comment period. Kimberly Clark has signed up. Is she here? She'd come forward, please, ma'am.
Um, I've sent all of you a package on Avalon Farm, so I don't know if you've had a chance to get it in the regular mail. Did you, did any of you get that?
Yeah, I received one.
We were here in June, the, I think, June 1st meeting, and we had written a request for a grant, um, which was denied, and so in June, we had asked for reconsideration of that denial and also what we needed to do to better become involved in your processes. And the purpose of us planning to be here tonight was, we never heard any response on that, so we were wanting to get some feedback. Um, and when we called, or Frank Lawson called, who's a part of Avalon, to plan, um, tonight to confirm that we would be here tonight, that this is the response that we got, um, from Jeanne Moore, that, um, that the, um, I gotta put my glasses on. That, um, no letters to our request had gone out, and, um, she stated that the budget was set for this year, which we had already been told that, and that we would start working on, that y'all would be working on a new budget in February and that we could apply then. And she put us on the list to get that information. And she also stated that, um, the commissioners usually take the advice of the JCPC, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and we should contact them in Raleigh. So, um, we're a little confused about why y'all take the advice of the JCPC, um, so I'd like to have some answers on that. And, um, um, what I'm going to say now is somewhat related to JCPC and an incident that Avalon Farm had with JCPC last week, where we had a grant approved and then it was also taken back, and it was, uh, I think Susan Blumenstein made the first motion to withdraw us from the program because of conflict of interest. I'm on the board of the farm, I'm the founder and the director and, but I've made application with JCPC and your county for three years, and I have always been on the board as a founder. The other issue that they had was that we had not paid our 2009 taxes. Um, we're tax exempt. Um, Avalon Farm owns our property. We have fought that vehemently with Doolittle for the past four years. Six, seven, eight, nine, he, um, deemed us not, um, tax exempt, and in 10, we are. Um, so I think there's gonna be something coming up for you, um, relating to that, um, but not through me. And lastly, I have to say that, um, Avalon Farm does not need to define our worth and our effect as an organization upon those we served, um, based upon judgment of those who do not understand what we do, um, nor have taken the time to look deeper within what, within our organization to know what we do, those who have just looked at the surface of who we are, and those who have taken the advice of others upon hearsay and gossip. With those that we work with at the farm, which we work with special needs, and those with disabilities of all sorts, with those that we work with at the farm, we try to meet them where they are in life and help them grow and help them learn. We don't cast them out because they're not where we think they should be. We try to help them understand growing where they should be, and that's what we've asked this council to provide us information on, what you need so we can better be a part of the community. Our mission here with Avalon Farm has always been that we do not charge these children to come out to the farm and that they are supported by government, whether it's local, state, or federal, and also private, um, sponsorship, which we have survived upon private sponsorship for the past four years in Aridale County. Um, also, JCPC didn't like it that our property is for sale. We've had it for sale, this is the second year now, it's for sale for $2.3 million. If we sell it, if anybody knows a buyer, send them our way, we are relocating in Aridale County. And, um, further, I have to say, we do not cast out people because they're not where we think they should be. Our organization is not perfect, I don't know of any that are. All we have asked for from this community is acceptance, some initiative to understand so we can become a better part, and in doing so, helping one another. I'm gonna leave with a quote from Abraham Lincoln, it's one of my favorites. "Character is like a tree and reputation is like a shadow. The shadow is what we think of it as, and the tree is the real thing."
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Chair of the committee also.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, um, I opened up a case management company-
Would you state your name, sir, for the-
Gerald Snow.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I own targeted, uh, case management services, and I provide targeted case management with, for children with disability and emotional disabilities. Uh, we have been shipping people out of this county because there's no services within the county except for New River, and if they get out of control, then we, we end up putting them in group homes and other locations. Uh, I have currently seven people at Avalon Farm, they've been able to stay in the, in this county, and she has been providing services for them, and out of the seven, none of them have had, had to go to a group home now. She does a really good job with animal therapy, it's not horseback riding, it's animal therapy with all kinds of animals if they don't wanna ride. Um, so basically, uh, right now with, with, uh, I'll be honest with you, I pay for some of my clients to go there because there's no monies. Uh, so basically, I end up paying for private treatment because I believe in that farm, and so I pay her per, per month. Um, it comes out of my funds. Uh, I, I feel like that, you know, um, the whole picture has not been looked at, and so therefore, you know, I realize that she is, uh, may not have to pay her taxes, but being a nonprofit organization, she should've never had to pay taxes in the first place. I don't know where the confusion came and really didn't get into the middle of that. I will say, if, if you could find some money to help support her, y- you would be surprised how many children in this community that are emotionally disturbed or are autistic could be served out there. Um, I know that right now, she's trying to get her Medicaid, uh, which is called a CAP program license, uh, that she hasn't been approved yet, but that'll only touch the tip of the iceberg, uh, more money could be used, and she could actually do a really good job for our community. Um, I know that we're trying to, uh, actually promote Avalon Farm, it's been real difficult because, you know, flyers only go so far, we all know that, and basically, she is gonna try to have a, uh, a fair, you know, where people can come out and see the farm and see how the things are done. Uh, one client I have in particular, uh, he was destroying his mom's home, and he's been out there for three months now, and he has actually learned to control his emotions. Uh, he actually rides the horse called Lucky, and, uh, Lucky won't move unless he's learned to stay calm. And so therefore, he has learned to stay calm through Lucky, which is a horse. Um, you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Snow? I guess not, Mr. Snow.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Is there any new business to come for the board? Hearing none, county managers report.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything, uh, there are a couple of items under closed session, um, that, uh, I would like to, when, when you do go into closed session, the, the very first one to ask Ms. Blumenstein, uh, Jeanne Hahn, and, and other representatives that are with her to, uh, attend first, and then we have some others that will come after that.
Okay. Thanks, sir. At this point, I'll make a motion that will go into closed session in regard to attorney-client privilege, that's General Statute 143, 31811A3, and Economic Development, General Statute 143, 31811A4. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Oh.
Oh. There'll be action as a result of that closed session and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have agreed to the requested amendment to lower the tax impact amount from forty million to thirty-two point seven million with an agreement where county has with PGI and Marshall and to allow the county administration to work out a payment plan on incentives that stays within the present county budget and is agreeable to the company.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cato. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, folks.